Hey Greg, Doc, Douglas.
Yeah.
All righty.
Hang on, hang on to that phone.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 20th regular meeting of your Board of Commissioners. Appreciate everyone attending tonight. And tonight, we will be starting off with an invocation by Pastor Charles Howell of the Speedway Presbyterian Church in Raidsville. We'll all stand if able. In following that, we will have a pledge of allegiance by Addison Ferris of the 4H. So please stand if you're able.
Let's pray together. Eternal God, we come humbly into your presence. Out of the turbulence of the world, our hearts disquieted by confusion, our lives contaminated by sin, we come to you. Give us an hour of insight. Grant us your grace to be honest with ourselves, sensitive toward our neighbors, and reverent toward you. We dare not come to you without bringing our brothers and our sisters. Father of all, you have said that we cannot love you unless we love our brothers and sisters also. We would bring them with us in our hearts, compassion, and goodwill. Teach us what it means to care even for those who despitefully use us, and so abiding in your love, we may abide in you. We come from the world. Men and women look on outer appearances to you, who looks into heart. We ourselves hardly know the secret motives of our own lives. We're so busy in the world that we seldom meet ourselves face to face. Be with us today. We bring before you our anxious concerns for this world. We lift up all nations in prayer, those whom we call enemies and those whom we call friends. You see the far-flung causes of our human tragedy. Deep within us, you know the sin that has caused it all. You who are no respecter of persons care for the victims of our inhumanity among all peoples. You hate tyranny and injustice. In your presence stand the welfare of all nations and the brotherhood and sisterhood of all. Grant us the courage of our fathers and mothers, who in desperate days were not undismayed, and in the face of many adversaries did not lose their faith. Draw close to any in special trouble who are here. Some are ill or burdened for their sick at home. Some have lately buried their dead away, and their hearts lie buried in the sepulcher. Some stand with their backs against the wall in desperate temptation, almost overwhelmed. Spirit of God, may your saving grace come to some such soul this night. Lay your hand on the best in us, and devote it to the good of all others. Amen.
Please remain standing, Ms. Ferris.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our list is a couple of proclamations. The first proclamation will be to declare Rockingham County 4H Week, October 3rd through 9th, 2021, in Rockingham County. Ms. Minus, are you going to present that for us? You're going to read that?
Thank you. Whereas 4H youth across the nation are leading efforts to solve problems in their communities and make a difference for their futures, and whereas 4H is the largest youth development organization in North Carolina and the largest in the nation with over 6 million participants, and whereas 4H in North Carolina claims 260,000 youth members and 13,000 volunteers, while Rockingham County's 4H program numbers more than 1,700 youth and more than 170 volunteers, and whereas 4H as part of the North Carolina Cooperative Extension System of the NC State University and NCA&amp;T State University is a program where youth learn through opportunities that provide them hands-on experiences in 4H's mission mandates of science, engineering, technology, healthy living, and citizenship. And whereas 4H has connected youth and their communities with the innovative research and resources from our nation's 112 land-grant universities and colleges for more than 118 years. Now, therefore, the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim Rockingham, October 3rd through the 9th, 2021, as National 4H Week in Rockingham County. We urge the people of this county to take advantage of the opportunity to become more aware of this special program that enhances our young people's interest in their futures as part of the Rockingham County 4H Youth Development, and to join us in recognizing the unique partnership between our county and our state university system. And we'd like Addison Ferris, one of our members, to come up and share some of her experiences.
Thank you, Ms. Minus.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to come talk about my 4H program. My name is Addison Ferris, and I attend Western Rockingham Middle School. As an eighth grader, I joined 4H in 2015. 4H began in 1909 when North Carolina State College signed an agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture. That created the Farmers Club, or Corn Clubs. These clubs were the first clubs that gave 4H its start. Slowly, more and more clubs started to be added, like poultry and swine clubs. Clubs for girls started to be added around 1911, and mainly focused on gardening and canning. The emblem of 4H is a four-leaf clover. With an H on each of the four leaves, the Hs represent head, heart, hands, and health. Our slogan is "Learning by Doing," and our motto is "To Make the Best Better." Both our motto and our slogan is represented and acted upon everything we do. As an organization, we are involved in countless projects, programs, and together, we are geared towards those two phrases in 4H. 4H is the largest youth development organization in the nation. North Carolina, we have over 247,000 members. In Rockingham County, we have over 3,400 youth members. In Rockingham County, we have about eight clubs that range from livestock clubs to various community-driven clubs. For each and its youth have been successful because of the constant support of our agents, leaders, volunteers, and families. 4H has changed my life in so many ways. It has given me a new sense of confidence in myself, and has made me more driven to reach my goals. I have learned certain life skills and leadership skills. I have learned vital social skills that I will need in the near future. Before 4H, I would have never in a million years stood up here to do this speech willingly, and willingly gone up to someone I didn't know and start talking to them. But now I have learned how to do both of those things, and much more with a newfound confidence that was not there before. I would like to tell you about some of the experiences I have had with 4H. I'm a part of the Shala 4H Club, where we study every aspect of livestock and prepare for judging competitions and livestock shows. One of the first events I attended was a livestock show. Over this summer, I have went to livestock camps and livestock judging competitions, where we have to give reasons in front of judges about why we place this animal a certain way. I have done community service, and my 4H club has donated canned foods to Lot 2540. I never know how exciting owning and raising goats and lambs could be, until 2015, when I got my first ever show goat, and 2017, when I got my ever-first show lamb. So at first, it was frustrating trying to figure out what it was supposed to do and what I was supposed to do. I finally started to figure out what some of my problems were, thanks to the guidance of my club leader, and the other youth in my club, and my parents. This season has been very rewarding, to see not only the progress our animals have made, but the progress that all the exhibitors have made. I have learned so much in a short amount of time that I have been in 4H. I will be aging out in a couple years, and I plan to take advantage of every opportunity that is given to me, that I can continue to make the best better. Thank you for your time tonight, and I hope you and everyone in this room has learned a little bit more about the amazing organization that 4H is. I would now like to ask the Commissioners of Rockingham County to adopt the proclamation of 4H Week in Rockingham County.
Ms. Ferris, you've done a great job presenting tonight. Thank you. Gentlemen, she's put it in our lap, so do we have a motion?
You do.
Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Travis. So we have a motion and a second? Any discussion, any comments? Let me just say, thank you guys for being here. My children were in 4H, and it meant so much to them. So thank you for the program that you do. And with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. Now, I didn't know if you guys wanted to come up and take some pictures with the Commissioners? Would you like to do that? Just come right up in here, we'll step down. You're going to read this one though, right? Once we're done?
Sure, I'll do it.
The next item on our list is the Rockingham County Fall Litter Sweep Proclamation, and we'll just stay here and let Lance read that for us.
Sure. Rockingham County Fall Litter Sweep Proclamation. The North Carolina Department of Transportation organizes two annual statewide litter sweep events to work toward the goal of clean and beautiful roads. Additionally, the focus of these campaigns is to motivate groups and individuals to clean litter from along the road sides and to discourage the practice of littering, resulting in a cleaner Rockingham County, therefore, a cleaner North Carolina. Whereas the natural beauty of our county and state, as well as a clean environment, are sources of pride for all citizens, attracting tourists, and aiding in recruiting new industries, and whereas the cleanup will improve the aesthetics of Rockingham County, increase awareness of the need for cleaner road sides, and emphasize the importance of not littering. And whereas the cleanup scheduled for September 11th through September 25th, 2021, will unite adopt the highway volunteers, Department of Correction inmates, and community service workers, and North Carolina Department of Transportation employees. North Carolina DOT also encourages local governments and communities, civic and professional organizations, businesses, churches, schools, families, and individual citizens to participate by furnishing cleanup materials and disposal. And whereas North Carolina Department of Transportation will provide pickup of collected trash, tires, and other abandoned items, and transport them to the Rockingham County landfill, North Carolina DOT shall be exempt from landfill tipping charges for disposal of such items from September 13th through September 27th, 2021. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners that September 11th through September 25th, 2021, as hereby proclaimed Rockingham County Fall Litter Sweep, this the 20th day of September, 2021. Mr. Chair?
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Do we have a motion to adopt this resolution?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, motion carries. Thank you. With that, we come to a special proclamation tonight. I'll invite Representative Pertle to come up, and Representative Hurley of Randolph County. Thank you, folks, for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm joined today by Representative Pat Hurley from Randolph County. We're here tonight to recognize the Honorable Jerry Carter. He was a for his service to our nation, to our state, and to our community. He passed away on August 3rd, 2021, at the age of 66. Born in Rockingham County, he spent most of his life here. He served in the United States Army from 1974 to 1976. A man of great faith, for all that knew Jerry, he founded the Regional Baptist Church in 1988, and served as a senior pastor for over 30 years. He served as a chaplain for the North Carolina Highway Patrol for the last 12 years. And in 2018, Jerry was elected by the citizens of this county to serve in the North Carolina House of Representatives, and he was re-elected for a second term in 2020. While representing the people of North Carolina, he served on numerous house committees and worked tirelessly to make a difference in the lives of all North Carolinians. Married for 45 years to Barbara, I mean Brenda, I'm sorry. They had two daughters, Hope and Becky. And if I'm not mistaken, they just added a seventh grandchild.
Actually, we have six grandchildren and two great-grandchildren.
Two. Jerry was devoted to his family, his church, and his community. He was respected and cherished by his colleagues in the General Assembly. I'm joined today by Representative Hurley, but also Representative Kyle Hall wanted to be here tonight. He was called away back to Raleigh to work on the budget, but he sends his regrets, and he really wanted to be here. At this time, I'd like Brenda and Becky to come forward. We got a little presentation. But while they're coming forward, I'm going to ask my colleague to say a few words. She worked with Jerry in the General Assembly, and Brenda, that's one thing that in taking his spot in Raleigh, I've been welcomed by members on both sides of the aisle, and each member that come and spoke to me took the time to tell me a Jerry story. He was loved by so many people in Raleigh, and I just want you to hear from just one that drove up tonight to join us.
I wanted to be here. This is my 15th year on the General Assembly. Never thought about running. The Lord calls you to do what you need to do. You'd be surprised, he calls you to politics sometimes, just as he did Jerry. And you know who you can trust. You learn who you can trust by working with them. And we were so blessed to have Jerry working with us and being a representative for this district. And my daughter was born in Morehead Memorial Hospital, and we lived in Leeksville many years ago. It was Leeksville. And have roots to this community. But we were all so blessed to have Jerry with us for the time that we had him. And I know the hurt will never, never end, but maybe a lesson as time goes by. But I'm glad to be here to present this to you today from our General Assembly.
Thank you. And I want Lance Reed, we have something we've had framed from the governor.
Sure. This is from Governor Roy Cooper. The state of North Carolina presents this United States flag in memory of Representative Jerry Carter and certifies it was flown over the state Capitol Building on the third day of August, 2021.
And Brenda, one thing that's special about this flag is that it was given to me by a member of the House who wanted me to share it with you. This is the flag that was draped over Seat 76 upon his passing, and stayed there, and with all the due respect and love from all the representatives in the North Carolina House. Thank you.
Brenda, Brenda, Brenda? Let's get a picture with you. But additionally, what we would like to say, the Commissioners have gotten together, and we have agreed that in honor of Jerry, we're going to place a memorial brick out in front of the charters of freedom from the Commissioners. So it'll be a permanent reminder of Jerry and his service and love for his community and for his family. Thank you, guys, for being here. We appreciate it. Thank you, Representative Pertle. Thank you, Representative Hurley. We appreciate you being here as well. Let's just go ahead and stay here, if you guys will. We've got two more presentations. County Manager?
Yes, sir. Can I borrow the microphone for a second?
You may.
It's been a long time coming. Rodney Cates had been talking to me about thanking some of those individuals who helped tremendously through the COVID pandemic, but particularly the COVID vaccination portion. I and the board would like to take this opportunity to recognize a few departments and agencies that went above and beyond their normal operations to support citizens during the COVID pandemic. And before we start, so we started the very first vaccine process, day one, it was no appointments. People show up, and it was in the playbook what you don't want to do. And so we learned from that. After that, we started making appointments. We had drive-throughs, which were very successful. Then after that, we transferred over to the Community College, where it was very successful. So there was a lot of people out there that did a hard work, dedication. There was a lot of rain, cold days, adverse weather, but they stuck through it and they helped us. And so tonight, I wanted to point out several of these different agencies. The first would be Emergency Services, Rodney Cates. And let me say, Rodney Cates was, he was the logistical genius behind all of the work that was done. I know it took a lot of people, but he was the backbone and the center point for making all this happen. So Cates, if you wouldn't mind, come up here. Receive yours, cross the line, then come back over, because you're going to help me out. Yeah, that's fine. Okay, next, we have Rodney Stewart. He was with EMS. He staged the ambulances. The staff at the clinic is Rodney Stewart? Yes, here he is. Did a lot of other things, but just, these are a few things that he did. Okay, the Fire Marshal, Anthony Crowder, directed citizens in and out of the vaccine site. And again, I think it's very important to show these people, because they worked Monday through Sunday, every day, and very hard work, very dedicated. We had some frustration from citizens. We ran a lot of people through. Trey, do you remember how many people we ran through?
Day one, about seven.
Okay. And then it continued on from that process. Jay Brooks, Emergency Management. Jay was in charge of the overall vaccination clinic. We appreciate all your hard work with that. Sheriff's Office, Sam Page, and Gray Smith. Gray did a lot of work with the logistics of traffic. He did a very good job with that, helped us through that, moved it seamlessly. So we appreciate that hard work. Honorable Page? Next is Public Health and HHS with Trey Wright and Felicity Farrell. Again, Trey obviously was behind the administration of the vaccinations, input data from state reports, and coordination of clinics. So again, we appreciate all your hard work with that. We're still dealing with it. And next will be the, I guess the booster next. Trey had to put in a little Go Power, which we beat the marshal this weekend. I'm sorry, Trey. Backwards. I guess when they were signing it, it kind of twisted around a little bit. Next, we have Lee Cockham, Economic Development. Again, this was a team effort. They provided the location for the call center and respite for our staff, arranged food services. So as you can see, it wasn't just one, two, three, it was everybody that made this happen. We greatly appreciate it. Probation and parole, David King. They were very, very helpful with parking attendants. Again, we had a lot of frustrated folks out there, but they were able to maintain their composure and help us through that. Community College, Dr. Ken Long. They provided a location for the vaccination clinic, and they were very helpful. Tony Guns here. Tony, you can come up here and accept this. They were very helpful with anything we needed. They made it happen, so we greatly appreciate that. The National Guard, we have Sergeant Frank Garcia and his group, if they want to come up here. Thank you very much. They were involved with the parking attendants, data entry for the state reports. We greatly appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I remember you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have the Civil Air Patrol, Lieutenant Colonel Sheila Gonzalez. Okay, they may not be in attendance. Cates? The Air Patrol, Civil Air Patrol? Okay. Information Technology, Derek Southern. He set up basically everything, scheduled the websites, check-in, validation of citizens of Panegonia, networking. Fantastic job. Again, as you can see, this crowd build, it takes just more than one or two people. It takes a, I wouldn't say village, but it takes a team. Safety and Risk, Chris Elliott, Traffic Control. He had to be the bad guy when people went the wrong way. Administration, I'll pat myself on the back. I'll shake your hands later. Last but not least, Ronnie Tate, set up clinic sites, provided signage and sanitation. So, Mr. Tate? So again, you see this crowd here, and there were many others that we didn't mention. We had finance in there doing data entry. We had folks doing screening citizens before they entered the building, transport citizens through the process. But again, as you can see, it took a team to get through this, and we'll have to deal with the booster coming up. But again, this is a team. We appreciate it. So if you would, give your applause for their effort.
Get like a two-layer kind of situation going on? Perfect. Taller people in the back. It's just the picture and the frame only carries so much. Okay, let's try. I don't want to cut anybody out. Can we scoot it just a little bit closer? I'm so sorry. Okay, that should work.
Thank you all.
Folks, we appreciate it. Folks, while we're making our way to our chairs, we've all just been introduced to our new Public Information Officer, Rebecca Pigram. So thank you for being here as well.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, have a seat. Wow. Very good. We appreciate everyone here tonight, and everyone that we've recognized has been very crucial. So we appreciate everything. Now Lance, we'll shake your hand.
Thank you.
And with that, we've got Jim Dandy, Carrie Taylor. You want to come up and present that? If you want to grab the mic from Jennifer, that'll be fine.
Good evening. We'd like to recognize a local company and celebrate their 100th anniversary. Jim Dandy is one of the country's leading belt and accessory Jim Dandy is one of the country's leading belt and accessory companies servicing retailers across the globe since 1921. They're located in Madison. The Penn family started Jim Dandy in 1921, successor to the Penn Suspender Company. Green Penn was the first president. He invented and patented the Jimco Adjustable Garter, the world's first adjustable garter for men, women, and children. They entered the belt business during World War II. The Danbury name was their registered brand name, and in the 70s, the sales expanded across the country. Today, Jim Dandy distributes a wide variety of belts, wallets, suspenders, and other accessories in dress, casual, workwear, and western styles. Some popular brands are Greg Norman, Pebble Beach, John Deere, Burn Workwear, Roper, Realtree, Colors by Alexander Julian, and their own proprietary brands include Danbury Golf, Danbury Workwear, Lady Danbury, G-Bar D Western Outfitters, and Cowgirls Rock. Their products can be found in major department stores and smaller venues. They have endured a century of ups and downs and continue to be a thriving company, and we thank them for their dedicated service to Madison and to Rockingham County. And I'd like to ask Brad Ken with Jim Dandy to come up. Thank you for so many years of service.
Brad, if you'll make your way, we'll come down and have a little photo op.
I'm going to pass this ramp to you guys on the way back out. Thank you very much Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I'm honored to be here on behalf of our company and our employees. And I do apologize for missing the last meeting. Something I apologize for. Anyway, Rockingham County has been a great supporter of us for 100 years now. Not only providing a good county to work in, a good city with Madison, but also providing us with great employees. I would venture to guess that 80% of our employees throughout these years have been from Rockingham County. So we very much appreciate your support. Thank you.
Because that one takes, y'all pass this around up there.
All right. With that, we'll move to item number six on our agenda, which is approval of our agenda. Gentlemen, are there any changes to be made tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to change item number 7H on the consent agenda. The amount should be $85,948 and not $42,974 this time.
Thank you Commissioner Powell. Do we have a second? We do have a second. Thank you Commissioner Travis. All in favor of the adoption of the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Very good. Item seven, our consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are non-controversial items. However, if anyone has questions about these items, please contact Lance Metzler, our County Manager. Mr. Metzler, we'll be glad to fill you in on the details. Are there any items that the members want to remove from the consent agenda? Nothing heard. We will accept a motion at this time for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Very good. We have a motion. Thank you Commissioner Powell. Is there a second? Second, thank you Commissioner Berger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you gentlemen. Moves us to item number eight, which is public comment. Mr. Metzler, you're going to be saved tonight. You don't have to read the rules because we have no one signed up.
Thank you.
With that, that takes us to item number nine, public hearings. And with that, Lynn, will you be presenting? Thank you. Please make your way.
Good evening Commissioners. Our new Director Howard Marziano is here also. He'll be coming up to introduce himself. I'm just helping out. He's going to lead, I'm just going to jump in.
Thank you Director Marziano.
I have your slide set ready.
Oh, thanks.
That we can work through. Just click.
Right there.
Right there when you're ready.
Good evening, y'all.
Good evening.
Not being familiar with how y'all do this, how do you want to, do we just go through the cases?
Yes, go ahead and present. 2021-16 is the first item for you to present. You'll present, then we'll open the public hearing for comment.
Sounds great.
Okay.
All right. The first case, 2021-16, is not showing up yet. Sorry.
Of course, your first time presenting. This is going to happen to you. I don't know what the issue is.
Give it a second. I can go ahead and start. This is a request for a zoning map amendment.
Thanks, Chair.
To rezone. It's stuck and not responding. To rezone the property noted by tax pin number 7922-01-47-5474. Location on Noonam Road. In the New Bethel Township. It'll be, the request is to rezone from residential agricultural to residential protected. At the planning board hearing, the planning board did recommend approval of the rezoning to RP. Basically, it's 18.4 acres. It's well suited for the development uses permitted in the residential protected district. As noted, the zoning request is generally supported by the Rockingham County Land Use Plan, and none of the characteristics of the G3 land class conflict with the zoning map amendment. The zoning request will allow all permitted uses in the residential protected zoning district, which would have similar characteristics to the mixed type of residential development associated with the uses currently presented on the nearby parcels. And I'd love to show you the map here in a second. Yeah, the maps are in the packet, but I do not have them in front of me, so. The first map should be a location vicinity map.
First map is the vicinity map. It's the new map format that I've set up for both the planning board and for the Commissioners. The vicinity map, second map is the zoning map that shows the parcel imrelation to zoning around the area. The third map is a simple aerial and water snapshot. And the last map, perhaps most importantly for your consideration, is the parcel imrelation to the future land use plan conference and development plan. This parcel is located in the G3 land class, which is specifically targeted for higher density mixed-use commercial and residential development. This request meshes well with the objectives of the land use plan for that class. The planning board voted seven to zero unanimously to recommend approval. There were no speakers present at the planning board hearing. We've received about five phone calls overall. I just checked my list. All inquiry calls essentially. And the applicant is here if there are any questions for the applicant.
Very good. A little bit lacking in information. My internet's not working on my iPad either, so it's not loading. So yeah, we're all kind of blind. But I did look at the meeting. Now, the August 9th meeting is when this was presented.
We got this.
Yeah, that's.
We have had our packets for a week now.
Yeah, I've looked at them.
We have looked at them. And there was nobody signed up to speak tonight on the Noonam Road.
Mr. Chairman, you going to open public hearing?
I am, I am. Just, I was hoping to see if that would come up. But with that, let's go and open public hearing for request 2021-16. And 2021-16, has no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for against this rezoning? Nothing heard. We will close the public hearing. Gentlemen, is there any discussion you? Yes, sir, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the zoning request for 2021-16 with analysis and statements.
Is there a second? In favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Item A is approved.
Guess what? Now that you've approved it, we can fly through the maps really quick. Look at that. Number one, two, three, four, and the recommendation. All right, we'll move on to the next case.
Just to further flesh out Commissioner Berger's comments, we all have had this pack with us for a week. We have looked at the information, so it's not that we're approving something without having seen it. So anyway, let's go to item B, 2021-18.
Yes, sir. This is a rezoning, a request for a zoning map amendment from residential protected to residential agricultural. Tax pin number is 8943-00-02-3139. Address is 3622 North Carolina Highway 150 out of Reedsville in the township of Williamsburg. This is unconditional. As you can see, it's practically at the very edge of the county. It's surrounded by, surrounded a lot by RA. There's just a little strip of residential protected that this was part of, and some light industrial across the street. Here's an aerial view. It's located in the 02 rural land class according to our land use plan. It's characterized by low and very low density residential agricultural uses. As far as, let's see, the planning board did vote unanimously seven to zero to approve this request.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Marziano. We appreciate it.
I'm sorry, did anybody call in and request an informational?
As far as I'm aware of, there was like one inquiry, I believe.
We had about three phone calls for the planning board hearing, but none prior to Board of Commissioners hearing.
We will open the public hearing for case number 2021-18. And again, there's, no one has signed up to speak. So with that, we will close the public hearing. And gentlemen, floor is open. Any discussion or motions?
Mr. Chairman, move approval of case 2021-18 as presented with adjustments and modifications.
Is there a second?
A second.
And thank you Commissioner Travis. We do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Very good. This item has passed. We go to item C, rezoning request 2021-19.
Hello again. We are on this one. This is a rezoning request to go from residential agricultural to neighborhood commercial conditional district for the purpose of a small engine repair shop. I'm going to let Lynn come up and present this one, since it has a little bit more intimate details that he's been working with the requests are on.
Thank you. He's just a little bit nervous tonight, guys. This designated by taxman, as you can see here, is located at 2937 Price Road, just outside of Eden in the Leeksville Township. That is a typo there. Apologize for that on that slide. It is a conditional rezoning. The uses agreed to and requested are extremely limited and to these three. It's a rezoning to neighborhood commercial conditional district specifically for a small item repair and rental shop. Accessory uses that are traditionally associated with these types of businesses, and of course, any allowed signs that the UDL would permit. All other uses that would otherwise be allowed in the district have been excluded, partially in, at the request of the applicant, partially to minimize any concerns about uses that might have been a little more controversial or not necessarily suited exactly for this district, which makes it, in my opinion, more suitable for recommendation for approval. This is the vicinity map. Like I said, just outside of Eden in Leeksville Township. There's generally residential, mixed types of residential zoning in the area. There's this tiny little light industrial parcel up here that I investigated, and I cannot remember off the top of my head exactly what it is on there for. Aerial map, nothing specific there for you to look at. I did want to point out on the land use plan map that this is located in the G1 low-density land class, which is targeted for lower-density residential uses and limited commercial located at rural cross-road nodes. I have to slow down when I say that one. This is located about half a mile, a little over half a mile, to the northwest of an identified node at the corner of Price Grange and Price Road. Again, this land class is characterized by low-density residential development and limited commercial development at these crossroads. Excuse me. Generally, areas located within the G1 land class are rural. Neighborhood commercial may be appropriate for zoning according to the land use plan. The planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request at their meeting on August 9th, seven to zero. A little background information on this parcel, I presented this to the planning board, that this spot has sort of a local history of being used for different commercial uses in the past, actually going back pretty far. I've been told by several people in the neighborhood, multiple things that had been here, including what I thought was the funniest, was a beer joint. That's what someone told me. So the current owner picked up this parcel and began operating his small engine repair shop, believing that was perfectly fine based on the history of the parcel. But then it came to our attention that the zoning didn't quite match the use, so he is working to correct that. And we've looked at the land use plan. I feel like there's nothing standing in conflict to this. We did get a few phone calls about this one, a little bit closer to 10 total for the planning board and the Board of Commissioners. Almost all were simply inquiries. There was one person, I didn't get a lot of detail, and she just left a voicemail that said that she would be opposed to any commercial use whatsoever up in this area. And I said, okay, we'll write that down as opposed. But that was basically it for the history and the phone calls. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Gentlemen, do we have any questions? With that, we will open the public hearing for 2021-19. And again, we have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this one? That being said, I don't see anyone. We will close the public hearing. Gentlemen, do we have any comments or any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that in case 2021-19, that we approve that with the correction that it is a conditional use permit instead of unconditional.
With analysis and comment?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Do we have a second? And we have a second. Thank you Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioners Powell and Commissioner Berger. So with that, any other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to item D, rezoning request 2021-20.
Thank you. This is a rezoning request from residential agriculture, residential mixed. Location is at 685 River Road. Has this over here Mayo Madison area. Zoning map shows the, it's kind of an eclectic mix of zoning districts with industrial, residential protected, residential agricultural, a little bit of everything laying around. Here's the aerial and from our land use map, it's well-suited for the G3, G2 land use areas and is still in support, I mean, is still supported by our land use plan to go to residential mixed. It's very suitable for the environment, the surrounding, everything around it. The planning board did vote unanimously to recommend approval for this rezoning. And I do believe the applicant is here tonight if you would like to ask any questions.
Gentlemen, do we have any questions?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, how close is this parcel to the recently installed water line?
That's a good question. It's quite close, and this parcel will be accessing not county water, I believe, but I'll let the applicant...
Ross, do you want to respond to that?
Exactly. He will be accessing water and sewer services. It's right nearby. I'll let Charles speak to exactly how he's going to attach.
At that point, it should be Mayodan's water, not county water.
It may be, it's who he is working.
Mr. Chair, county commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight.
Hang on one second. Hang on one second. Just quickly, just answer the question on the water real quick, and then we'll open the hearing and let you speak on that.
There is a brand-new water line that's been installed by the county. It's along River Road directly in front of our property. It's on the north side of River Road.
Since you've answered that question, if you will, let me open the public hearing. And we will open the public hearing for case 2021-20. Present, sir.
Okay. Mr. Chair, again, thank you. In addition to Marzio's comments, I would like to give you just a brief overview of Rivers Edge Farm. We're proposing to rezone this parcel to residential mix. This will allow a major subdivision using the public water and sewer. Again, this public water and sewer is controlled by the town of Mayo Dan. We do have an agreement with the town of Mayo Dan to use their water and sewer. If you'll look on your second page of the handout, you'll see an aerial rendering showing the proximity of our project to I-73, Highway 220. Also, the proximity to Lowe's, McMichael High School, and the Mayo River State Park. On the third page, you'll see an updated layout of our subdivision. It's just over 100 lots. We're going to have only one entrance into the subdivision off of River Road. If you'll flip the page to page number four, you'll see a rendering of the entrance. It's going to be very similar to Kali Brook, Winsome Forest. We're going to have berms along River Road. Anticipate the homes to be in the 1,400 to 1,600 square foot range, 225,000 to 250,000. From a marketing standpoint, we're going to really push the new river park in Madison, the Mayo State Park that's close by. And just a few minutes away, you have Deep Springs Country Club. Recently, North Carolina Golf Magazine voted it a top 100 golf course. Lastly, and the big seller will be the proximity to I-73, Highway 220. So that's it in a nutshell. We're super excited about the project and be more than happy to entertain any questions you have.
Thank you, sir. Questions? With that, let me go ahead and say we have no one else signed up to speak yet again for this issue. So at this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing for case 2021-20. Gentlemen, any questions for Mr. Rakestraw?
Make a motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Travis.
Make a motion to approve zoning request 2021-20 with analysis and statements.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. That being said, we have a motion duly on the floor. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Very good, very good. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Rakestraw. Wish you well.
Does he want this back, Charlie?
Do you need these back? Very good. Next item on our list is number 10. And this will be Ms. Regan and Dr. Gunn from Rockingham Community College. They're going to give us a workforce development center update. Thank you, guys, for being here tonight. We appreciate you.
Your baby right here.
First, Dr. Kenlaw sends his regrets this evening. I am Sheila Regan, Vice President for Academic Affairs. Dr. Gunn, you know very well, our Associate Vice President for Facilities and External Affairs. And we're here tonight to give you an update on the quarter cent sales tax revenue. You've seen the photos, and some of you have been to campus. It has been transformational, and I know that's a word we use a lot, but I've been in the county beneath the college for five years. And I'm walking into spaces now, and I recall what it looked like five years ago. So it has been a tremendous asset and has transformed the way we deliver instruction to our external stakeholders. So we're deeply appreciative of your support. The big project with the quarter cent sales tax, as you know, is the new building, the Center for Workforce Development. And Dr. Gunn is going to take you through the timeline. We're getting very close to having a groundbreaking ceremony, Mr. Travis. So I'll turn the mic over to Dr. Gunn. Afterwards, I will take you through some of the smaller projects and initiatives and talk you through how that has really changed instruction.
Thank you, Sheila. Let me give you an update, first of all, on the revenues and expenditures that we've received as part of the quarter cent sales tax. Since October of 2018, we've received a little bit over $5.7 million. And through the end of last month, we've expended nearly $3.6 million. I'm pleased to report that monthly revenues have held steady, averaging nearly $214,000 over the last five months. And that's great because we continue to see no drops due to the pandemic. As Sheila mentioned, the major use of the quarter cent sales tax revenues is indeed the Center for Workforce Development. And as you know, this is a $19 million, 42,000 square foot structure. It's planning to house our advanced manufacturing programs, computer-integrated machining, industrial systems, and electrical systems. And we are pleased to report that our architects have completed the third and final stage of design. We're awaiting review comments from the state construction office in Raleigh. Our architects will then respond to those comments and then hopefully receive approval to advertise for construction bids. Our timeline here, as I said, we submitted construction documents by the end of July. We hope to advertise for bids in November with a bid opening coming in December. Hopefully, with contracts signed, we can start construction in February of '22 and finish construction a little bit over a year later in May of 2023. Ms. Regan, now we'll give you an update on several other projects and initiatives on campus.
Our cosmetology program is housed in our science building, and so there's a salon, two classrooms. And that space had not been renovated or purchased new equipment since the middle of 1992 or '93. We, two weeks ago, the North Carolina Cosmetic Arts Board approved our inspection to start classes in a renovated salon. We're going to have an open house in a few months, and I hope that maybe you can have a meeting over on campus, but to see this space. To give you an idea of what a renovation will do to enrollment, new lights, paint, flooring. For the past three years, we had single-digit enrollment in cosmetology. Nine students, eight students for two years respectively. This year, we have 19 new students to start cosmetology. Tonight, we started a new workforce development program, bilingual cosmetology. So there are four students who, English is not their native language, will be taking cosmetology for a non-credit program. So we're going to serve 38 students thanks to this renovation. This was quarter cent sales tax money. We're going to let our students name our salon and have a contest, name the salon, and have a huge open house. And we really want to bring the community into this space to see how it impacts student learning. The humanities building is a general classroom building. A year ago, we finished the first floor, new lights, paint, flooring, new furniture. We're about a month away from finishing the second floor of the building. That second floor houses the early college high school, so they will have four new classrooms, two new offices. It also houses our general classrooms and our English department, so there'll be four classrooms for the college and 10 offices for our faculty. Agribusiness Technology is one of the programs we've been able to start thanks to the quarter cent sales tax. There's a classroom and lab, a 20-by-72 greenhouse, and a storage building. And this greenhouse is pretty spectacular. It's climate-controlled, it's very impressive. Again, we want to have an open house to bring the community out to see how the quarter cent sales tax has been working for them. I think one week ago, we had a planning meeting to start or to get some input on, to start a construction trades program. Commissioner Powell was able to attend that meeting. We're going to, we are renovating the space at the downtown regional, the woodworking center, to start a workforce development construction trades program. So we had two business owners represented. Mr. Hall could not make it, but he gave Mr. Powell some feedback. To start this program in January, again, we're going to have an open house, and we want to have some core construction trade programs, basic carpentry, and then expand into plumbing and electrical and HVAC. Industrial Technologies II is another big project. Currently, that building houses our HVAC program. We are gutting that building to move welding there to have, to expand from 17 stations to 34 stations. And we'll also have a fabrication lab. That timeframe is tracking similarly to the Center for Workforce Development. It'd be great if we could move into that building at the same time of our new building. But you'll see the timeline there to update industrial to tech. This revenue has allowed us to start new degree programs. Quarter cent sales tax did not renovate our own health science building, but some of the new equipment that's going into that building to expand the way we offer nursing instruction is pivotal. The mannequins cost $30,000 and $40,000, so it's been fantastic because we cannot go to clinical like we did due to COVID. So we've been able to do simulation to continue instruction. Our new degree programs, AAS programs, our new certificate programs, which are more short-term, and then the non-credit workforce development programs that we've been able to start because we have renovated space and we have updated equipment thanks to the extra revenue. What are your questions?
Gentlemen, do we have any questions? Come on, Mr. Powell, I know you have one.
I don't really have a question. I think mine's more of a statement. There may be a question in this. I would just like to say that it appears that most of the money that you spent from the quarter cent sales tax does revolve around the creation of jobs at some stage, be it beautician who may become an entrepreneur and own their own shop and create jobs in the county, or, of course, carpentry, which could do the same thing, but is also designed to fulfill a job niche in the county that's not being filled now. Is that correct?
Cybersecurity lab, similarly.
Absolutely. And the LPN to RN is a continuation of the program that we have currently in our county schools, where I believe Eden Moorhead is the lab for the nursing program. Is that correct?
No, we do, we have had students get clinical hours at the clinic, yes.
Okay. And then the last thing, I was told about a week ago that you guys are paying the upfront cost on the building. So like the architectural and engineering and stuff, is that coming out of the money that you've already collected?
For the Center for Workforce Development?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, it's coming out of the quarter cent sales tax revenue.
So the preliminary work that's been done on this building, such as architectural engineering and those kind of things, have already been paid for upfront out of the money that you've collected so far on the quarter cent sales tax?
That's correct.
Well, I'd like to thank you for doing the job that you're doing. I look forward to seeing, this building is something that we've worked very hard for in the past, and I'm glad for Rockingham County.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah. I understand there's a proposal to expand early college. I didn't hear any mention about modifications of buildings or adjustment of facilities to accommodate. Do you know anything about that?
Yes, we just updated a memorandum of understanding where we want to expand early college high school from 400 to 500 students. We, we understand it's going to take more space and possibly more another teacher on the RCS side. But the renovated humanities building, I suspect if they need another classroom, we will give them one of those classrooms where they are currently, where they will be.
Yeah, and just for public knowledge, I noticed an extensive modification to double the number of welding stations. So I'm assuming all your welding programs, which is a big consumer of your student assets, are going to be in that building rather than in the advanced technologies building?
Correct, correct. Yeah, the programs that will go into the new building will be machining, computer-integrated machining, electrical systems, industrial systems, which is more of a mechatronics-type program.
I didn't hear you mention computer security. Isn't that part of the...
That is in our advanced technologies building, and quarter cent sales tax did pay to renovate our information technology lab and install a cybersecurity curriculum. We used some Perkins money, and we offset some of the costs with quarter cent sales tax.
And I heard you mention in your timeline, Tony, about approval from the state for your last set of plans. How's it going?
As far as we know, it's going well. What'll happen, they'll come, the state will come back to us with several pages of review comments. Architects will work through each of those, reply to them, send plans back to the state with those corrections, clarifications, and then hopefully the state will send us a letter saying you're clear to go for bid.
Hope is not a strategy. I'm particularly curious because most of the delays that we've seen in the groundbreaking that we've talked about have been awaiting state approval. I would hope that you would come to this body, if not our state senator, if you need some help in that regard.
We know how to get in touch with them, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Travis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tony, thank you so much. I appreciate the college working with the county and the schools, you know, and trying to better Rockingham County. And y'all have been a great partnership with us, so it's a mutual, you know, mutual understanding. But I want to make sure that the citizens know if they need updates, what they do.
Right, and we're glad we keep our website updated. That's a good check. We speak, Dr. Kenlaw is actually scheduled to speak to a civic club next month. And then we put out press releases. We constantly report to our Board of Trustees, so there are various ways for people to keep in touch with our progress.
Right. The biggest thing I get, and I told you this, most phone calls I get is, we want to know when is this building going to be built? And, you know, I understand it's a process, and most citizens don't realize when you have... And most citizens don't realize when you have the state involved, it slows down tremendously. But I appreciate your effort. But you remember, we had a joint meeting with the schools and economic development in the county. And a lot of things were brought forward. It was a great meeting. A lot of things were very concerning. I want to know, what is RCC willing to do to try to address some of the issues that we brought up in them meetings?
If I don't answer it, ask a question in a different way. So a smaller subcommittee is going to come out of that larger meeting. And if I understand correctly, maybe first week of October, we hope to have our first meeting. One of the things that we are doing now to address workforce is, one, we are on the high school campuses teaching courses. So we're, and we have a career coach who goes through the high schools to really promote career technical education. Early college high school, when they promote, when they go out and recruit for the ninth grade, we're going to add a layer of career technical education so we can recruit more students to early college high school in career technical education. We will teach on the high school campuses. The, the big thing that we hear from employers, the soft skills, the essential skills for, for students and workers, come to work, be on time, listen, follow instructions. So we're going to try to create, I don't want to call it a curriculum. We're going to try to create something to address that K through 12. And when they come over to the college, where they're building on these skills. You have to get up every morning and go to school and go to work.
That's, that's exactly what I wanted you, the citizens, to hear from you, that, how serious we're taking this workforce and soft skills and how to, you know, we're all very serious. And I don't want it to die. I want it to keep going. But my biggest thing is, I want to know how we are reaching the parent of those kids so they know what we as a county and college and the schools have to offer.
We, we have been invited to participate in the strategic planning of Rockingham County schools. So we've had one meeting that I participated in. Ms. Cochran, Mr. Powell, were you on that call?
I've been on the individual sessions.
So there is a real commitment by that group to integrate accountability and responsibility at, at every layer. And so with a committed effort, employers, the college, public school, I think we can make some progress in, in that regard.
Yeah, that's the biggest thing I, I want to stress is you've got to get the parents involved with decision-making at home on what opportunities are available for that student. Because, you know, my, my son just graduated and a lot of things I didn't know, I knew it was there because I'm a county commissioner, but other people did not know. And I had to tell them myself. And they were like, well, I didn't know that was out there. And so, so I appreciate that effort to get to that parent because, you know, the majority of the students here come from single-family homes. And that single-family member don't have time to do the research necessarily to help that child. And they rely heavily on the public schools to give them the information. But a lot of times, that information never comes home.
Right, right.
That's one, one thing I just wanted to stress. But I really appreciate everything y'all are doing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Travis. Any other comments? Very good. Thank you, folks, for being here. Thank you, Dr. Dunn. Thank you, Ms. Regan. We look forward to seeing you again three months, four months. Very good, thank you. Very good. You hear that clerk, get up with him. Thank you. Very good. That takes us to item number 11. Matt Reese with the PTRC, Assistant Director. This is a presentation of the one-third compensation and classification study. Turn it on, it's not on. It should be green. Is it orange? Turn around and let the clerk will get it for you.
Testing. There you go. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. So Pastor Howell asked for an hour of insight in his invocation. And I'm going to do my best to keep it within that providential blessing. So let me see what I can do. We have for you tonight the results of our first year. It is a four-year study that we have embarked upon. And in this year, we had central permitting inspections, EMS 911, a few other folks from the dentist area, income maintenance, sheriff's department, and non-supervisory positions within the sheriff's department. So you see that, we studied that during the fiscal year '21, and now we're looking for implementation in fiscal year '22. The reason I kind of go into that is that that will be the pattern that we will have for the next three years, where we will look at classification issues. Are the jobs appropriately identified? And have we been able to assess those in the labor market on a graded basis? We'll talk some more about that. But then, the fourth year will be different. The fourth year is where we look at progression through the range. How far are folks into that range? And what do we want to do about items such as compression that can occur between folks that occupy the same kind of job? It's an important item to look at. And it's an important one that we look at that in an independent year when we can allow a separate concentration of thought as well as funds to address that. So as we move forward, what the process will be annually is that employees complete questionnaires. And I want to really emphasize that to you because that really becomes the goal standard for this kind of study, is that the employees took a long time to complete a very lengthy questionnaire. And so that takes a snapshot of their job at that point in time. They sign off on that. The supervisors come behind that and review it. The supervisors sign off on that. And the reason that that's such an asset to you is that that's important to have to say, this is my job, right? This is what I do on a daily basis. This is how I make decisions. This is how I go about solving problems. These are the knowledge, skills, and abilities that are needed to complete my job. And that gets verified, right? And so then we move on to the regional council coming in. And we provide that objective analysis to say, how does that look like in other places? Where do we want to benchmark those jobs? How do we want to look at internal equity that's coming in there? We come back and bring all that back to management and say, these were the findings that we have. This is the picture that we took of Rockingham County. Does it look like the organization that you know and love? And then finally, we bring the implementation options to the board to say, here's what we're looking at as far as total, all, total overall job or budget impact for all of these jobs that we studied. Does that meet with your approval? So that's the process that we have on an annual basis. When we start talking about classification, this is the factors that go into classification. What are the environment that you work in? What are the kinds of folks that you come in contact with during the day? And what are the nature of, of that contact? Are you having to explain complex procedures to them and rules that the county may be implementing? And be able to do that in a customer service orientation? Are you a specialist in one particular area? Or do you have to know a whole lot about a variety of things and in more of a generalist role? Everyone makes decisions on behalf, all of your employees make decisions on behalf of the county. What decisions do you make? What goes into making those decisions? And then finally, if you make a mistake, what's the consequence of error back on the county for making that decision? Then we go into things such as, do you supervise folks? And how many do you supervise? And where are they located? Do you receive supervision immediately? And you're told exactly what to do? Or do you get more general supervision? And then finally, knowledge, skills, and abilities, pretty much what it says that it is there. But we often measure those in terms of certificates and degrees and other kinds of measurements. But really, what we're talking about is knowledge, skills, and abilities. So that's what defines a classification. Then when we're talking about employee compensation, it's important that we look at what we're looking at and what we're not looking at during the study. So an employee's compensation is determined by a variety of factors. Individual performance, the budget, and what are the operational needs? And then a compensation system structure, and what's the availability and quality of workforce? We're looking at those two elements in the left-hand quadrant on the bottom. We're looking at what's the compensation structure and what's the availability and quality of workforce? We're not looking at those other elements because that's not part of this study, to judge individual performance. And looking at other budget and operational items are left up to management. So how does all that fit together in one pretty picture? Well, here it is. We start off with the job analysis. Then we move to making sure that those are recorded in the job descriptions in the position, description questionnaire. The emphasis of our analysis is what is called job content or internal equity. It could be a market base, but it is often in public sector to be a job content. The reason for that is that we have a variety of levels in our organization. We have a detention officer, a senior detention officer. We have a deputy one, often a deputy two. We'll talk a little bit about that change for coming up. As those classes, that class series interacts, we need to have an internal equity to set that in motion, right? What's this job related to the next job in the same series, related to the supervisory classes? Where a market emphasis is used in organizations that don't have as many levels. And often, it's used for organizations that are simpler. The county, as you know, is really a holding company of a variety of different elements that are going on under one compensation plan. So having that with a job content, with an internal equity, is the approach that is most common in the public sector. We come back and reconcile those two elements together. What does the external labor market say? What does the market data say? And then how does that look in terms of the job content and internal equity? And bring that together in the documents that you have before you tonight, which is the assignment of classes to grades, showing you where things are. When we talk about market, this is what we're talking about. This is a graph of where do people in Rockingham County work? And so you can see that you have a very Piedmont Triad-centric area. There is a smattering that moves over into the triangle. But we've really left it to where the high-density levels are in Forsyth and particularly Guilford and Greensboro, High Point area. So that's the market that we've looked at. We've looked at folks, public employers, with inside North Carolina and looking at where the highest density is in these concentrations. When we start seeing that in terms of a market graph, this is what you get for income maintenance caseworker. You can see that Rockingham County is at the top. And then you see what the average is for this group. You see the other folks stacked up beneath that. You have two intersecting lines. One of those shows you the average for minimum. And that's the primary driver of our decision-making. What's the entry level for these, for the jobs that we're considering? And then the other one is where the actual average is for the market. And so for this case, we see that you tag in right at average for the income maintenance. So it's at a grade 13, staying at a grade 13. There is no change that's indicated for this one. It's a little bit behind that average, but not so much that it would justify a full grade adjustment for that. When we look at the next graph for sheriff's deputy, and this is one where you had that series of a sheriff's deputy one, a sheriff's deputy two, but at this point, you just have sheriff's deputies. So the recommendation is to change that titling scheme to sheriff's deputy to reflect where we are currently. That can be looked at in the future. And that would move from a grade 16 to a 17. Now, the reason for that is you can see there's a greater distance. So what is highlighted in orange there is what is needed to move you from where you currently are, where the blue bar ends, to where we propose for you to be on average with where you see that blue intersecting line. Now, the next piece that you see there up at the top is that it's a 3.5% proportional implementation. What does that mean? So that's this next chart that we have for you here. You can see that we're assigning all of these classes to a graded structure, in this case, 14 through 17. You can see where your valuation points are of minimum, pay target, and maximum. And what we're doing is, if we move a class from a grade 15 to a grade 17, that's moving that two grades. So we're saying that that entry point needs to change by 10%. Each of your grades is 5% apart. For those folks who are affected in that grade, the, the 70% implementation is to move those 7%. So the minimum will move 10%. And then the incumbents within that class move 7%. So that's a proportional implementation. That's done to address issues such as compression that can occur. And it is meant to also allow for affordability. The, this particular implementation is an aggressive implementation. It's 70% with a 3.5. Given the labor market that we're at right now, given the difficulty that we have with recruitment and retention, I think it is a really good move for you to consider moving it, that 3.5% per grade change, and moving to a more aggressive stance in that. That will be dollars that will save when you get to year four, when you start looking at how far are folks along in that salary progression? What more do we need to do to address that? This implementation will really help with moving that along. It's typically somewhere in a much lower factor than the 3.5. When we look at telecommunicator, we see this one moving from a grade 13 to a grade 14 to come and tag up there with what the average is. Again, the blue represents minimum. The orange is the distance that we're moving with the recommendation of the one-grade adjustment. And then you see where we are in terms of average actual and where that stacks up in terms of where average is and where Rockingham County comes out after that implementation we were just talking about. Detention officer, moving from a 14 to a 16. In some cases, it's a one-grade adjustment to tag where we need to be. In some cases, it's this two-grade adjustment that needs to happen for that. And so then our last one that we have is paramedic. And you see, that's moving from a grade 16 to a grade 17. Again, just a little bit shy of on average there. But with the one-grade adjustment, we come close enough to meet what our parameters were. You have some handouts that these two slides indicate. The first one is showing the summary of changes. So what you have here is what department did we look at? What classes were in there? Are there any changes to titles that we have for that? We have a current grade. You have your proposed grade, the grades that were changed, the number of people that were affected. And then the cost by department that you can see there. The other handout that you have is the entirety of your pay plan. This is the assignment of classes to grades. And this is really the document that you approve. You approve the document with the instructions to implement those changes at a 3.5% proportional range. And that will move you forward in where it is. I think what I want to do now, and I'll be happy to take any questions about this. But Paul, Lance, do you want to talk about budget right quick?
Okay. Go ahead. The first slide? So the estimated total cost for the first year is $474,000. And as you can see, it's broken down. The cost for the county would be $365,000 in year one since implementation of the plan would start in October. The reason the figure is, it will be higher than Matt's presented is because it includes vacant positions, which he didn't take in consideration as well as benefits such as FICA and retirement. You all have approved $300,000 last year and $400,000 this year, which would be more than enough to cover the first round of the one-third study. So I'm not asking for any additional funds, but I'm seeking that you all approve the one-third study as presented. We hope that the first year will be the highest of the one-third study since these are the ones in, in positions that we're, are most vulnerable to us losing to other counties. And I know in the past, it's been mentioned that we really can't compare ourselves to Guilford, Forsyth, Almonds. But that's, that's who we're losing, our staff, who we're losing those to our competitors in those larger areas, unfortunately. The first study examined, Paul, three. The first study examined 34 positions or 270 employees. This represents 41% of our permanent workforce. It's imperative that we continue to evaluate our, and classification, our classifications and compensation structures each year to remain competitive with the surrounding counties and dealing with the post-COVID and the private sector. In the next few years, the number of positions will be higher, but the number of employees in positions will be less. It does, you know, I talked to Commissioner Powell today about training staff and us training staff and paying for the staff to be trained here and they move on to other areas. And Commissioner Powell and I did talk about a few potential recommendations or at least discussions that we might look at this upcoming year. I have our newest HR director, Stephanie Kingston. She'd kind of like to discuss retention and recruitment, and then followed up by Kate's, and then we can have open dialogue for discussion.
Thank you for allowing me a few moments just to elaborate on how important this pay study for Rockingham County government and the citizens that we serve is. Just in 2021, since January, we have a total of 37 employees who will be retiring. 21 have already left us as of September 1. And I have 16 more to go who have already filed their applications and will be leaving before December 31st. Turnover in general, along with these retirements, is at an overwhelming high right now. I have over 42 vacancies that we're currently recruiting for. The vacancies are all over the county. These are within our tax department, finance, social services, public health, animal shelter, and EMS. We used to compete, like he said, mostly with our neighboring counties, We used to compete, like he said, mostly with our neighboring counties, especially Guilford. We were the training ground here, then they left us after about a year, maybe two years, moved there for more money. Sometimes the school system would take a few of our employees. Most recently, we are now competing with the private sector. That's put it at a whole nother level, and this is most recently since COVID, because everybody in the universe is hiring at a rapid rate. So how do we compete with a grocery store who is hiring folks to bag groceries or check out at $14 an hour? They pay $14 an hour, have benefits, and a 401K match. You could be a new telecommunicator in our county and come in at $14.55 an hour, which is only 55 cents more. In that position, you're going to be walking somebody through CPR or talking to a victim of a motor vehicle accident on the phone until help arrives. So if I were applying for a job in that pay category, would I want to apply for bagging groceries at $14 or a telecommunicator at $14.55? Probably to bag groceries, because when I go home at night, I'm not going to have any of those other things on my mind, stress-free. How do we continue to operate our animal shelter? We can't even get an applicant to show up for an interview anymore. Why would an applicant want to come here to work at our animal shelter, where they are going to be euthanizing animals, cleaning dog kennels, when they are going to receive the same salary to work at a local restaurant in our county? Right now, we have fast food restaurants who have their billboards advertising that they start at $12 an hour, free meal on the shift, free uniforms, and a flexible work schedule. In addition, it pays about $4 more per hour than our animal shelter help makes. And the biggest one so far that we've run into, I would say since probably March or April, how do we at the county compete with your local hospital? They are hiring at an hourly rate of five to eight more dollars per hour for our paramedics to come to work there. The hospitals have lost their nursing personnel due to the mandate of vaccines. So instead, our paramedics have been vaccinated. They're leaving us to go to work there. More money per hour, on average, five to eight more dollars per hour, and the hospitals have agreed to pay 50% of their tuition if they're in school right now. Those are big things. So how do we retain the current EMS staff that we have, particularly our paramedics and our EMTs, the ones that are still here and are willing to suffer through? They're all working extra shifts, and each pay period, they're taking on extra call, extra hours. Right now, I've got Rodney Cates and Rodney Stewart both working on trucks after hours. They're here eight to five working. They get off work, they work on an ambulance till 10 and 12 at night, get up and do it all over again the next day. So how do we continue to operate our ambulances if we don't have the staff? And I'll let Rodney speak, Rodney Cates, speak more about that here in just a minute. So finally, what is post-COVID going to look like for our workforce here at the county? It's something that we've got to think about. We've got to keep pushing forward, and that's the main reason that this pay study is so important. We've got to keep the staff here that we have.
Thank you, Ms. Kingston.
So Mr. Chair, there will be two asks tonight. One would be the compensation pay plan study, and the other will be what Mr. Cates will discuss, but I'd rather you go ahead and talk about the one-third study first, and then have Mr. Cates come up and address the additional requests.
Good. With that, we'll open the floor for questions.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Just, just wanted to see if anybody has questions.
Well, I got one question real quick. Well, thank you for taking over the HR Director. I recommended you, so I hope that helps. Now, I know my understanding is the county also offers pay for schooling, up to $3,500 a year, and if you go to RCC, based on talking to Mr. Gunn, that covers the whole year, books and everything. So we're at 100% coverage for tuition, are we not? Okay, so that's a good recruiting tool. If the hospitals can use 50%, we can use 100%, right? Okay. If it's budgeted for.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Richardson. Matt.
I know Matt pretty well.
Yes.
I've never caught him in a lie.
Certainly hope that continues after tonight, sir.
But you might have some trouble with this one. I appreciate all the research, and we've had conversation about this, both with you and Matthew and other folks at the PTRC. What we don't have, at least I haven't seen, is some idea of whether, if we implement the suggestive 1.3, is it going to solve the problem?
I think that, if I can just sort of take off on that, in my 25 years, sir, I have never seen the market as aggressive as it is now. And that includes the dot-com boom when things were going nuts. Everybody wanted a webmaster. We had no idea what a webmaster was, but everybody wanted one, and it was a six-figure salary, and the CEOs of organizations at that point were not making a six-figure salary. It has never, ever been more aggressive in my career than it is right now. So will this completely solve your problem? I don't think so. I mean, just being really candid with you, sir. I think it is certainly the step in the right direction.
Do we have any anecdotal data from folks that have done something similar to, to give us at least a feel?
Sure, sure. The, the next step up in a study is what we call a full implementation, where if the minimum is moving 10%, you move everyone in the entire range 10%. I have only done a few full implementations in my entire career due to the cost of them. A really small municipality that is in a high-growth area outside of Raleigh recently implemented a full study, a full implementation, and it was their only choice because they had such a bleed of folks that they had gotten to that point where they really needed to take that. So what I, I have not seen anyone talk about, let me, let's move back to a little bit more conservative posturing, right? Let's go down to maybe a 2.5% implementation or something of this nature. I'm just not seeing it right now. There, there is no, there's no piece of data, there's no information that I can share with you tonight that I can reasonably say to you, you can take your foot off the gas, right? I mean, if it was, I'm a conservative fellow, and I would deliver that to you right now, but there's just not. And I, I'm not trying to be particularly hyperbole with what I'm delivering to you tonight. I'm just saying I've never seen it this way. I've never, the, the signage that I saw at, at a recent resort up in Waynesville in North Carolina, as I was going back down 276, every single marquee along 276, the first line was not buy one, get one free. The first line was, this is how much we pay. Every single restaurant, place of business that had a marquee out in front of it where you change the letters, the first line on that was what they were paying. And I've never seen that. I've, I've never seen anything like that. I went to McDonald's the other day, and when I went to get the cup that they delivered me, it says, "We're hiring." I've never been to a McDonald's where every single cup was, "We're hiring," right? It's, it's, it's a different place that we're in.
Yeah, and, and at the PTRC, we've had these discussions, and we've talked about Mrs. Walker-Fox and I talk about getting people to actually apply for jobs rather than staying home. Got any ideas about how this might help us there?
I, I think certainly it will, it will help. The, the issues, though, are that it's going to continue to take that, it's going to have to take creative efforts, it's going to have to take the kinds of things that you were talking about with Rockingham County Community College to get folks into your pipeline earlier, right? To show them, these are the careers that we have available, this is a viable career, a place where you can work within Rockingham County and not have to commute into the urban core, right? That it's a lifestyle choice that you can make. And being able to sell all of that, as you said, to folks is just really incumbent. You've got to offer the total package. Salaries start it, right? Salaries are your foundation, and so you're applying the foundation, and then you've got to add those other amenities on top of it.
Yeah, and I would mention, and I think this is representative of the whole board, we just want to treat our people fairly as a beginning, as a starting point, as well as resolve these issues. Appreciate it, Matt.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell?
Yes, sir, Mr. Reese. And Mr. Metzler, this may be a question for you. I'm not sure, a series of questions. One of the things that concerns me about these studies is we've done these before. And so we, we have a starting pay, we have a mid-grade, and we have, you know, a cap on the high end. What policies or procedures are in place to keep this moving forward? So if you have a 2.5%, what am I trying to say? Inflation rate, you know, the cost of, the cost of inflation. Are, are we raising those rates all the way across? Because if we're not, then when you come back four years from now, we could be adding 10% to these to get people back to those starting points.
That's an excellent question. That's an excellent and very insightful question. You do need to move your scales on a regular basis. Otherwise, you're exactly right, that when you do a study in 2024, and you're looking at 2022 numbers or 2020 numbers, if you haven't adjusted your pay scale, then you're already going to be off, right? So you're going to need to move that. The, the strategy to do that is to figure out, on average, what can we move our incumbency? Let's pick a number. Let's call that 4%, right? If we can, on average, move our incumbency 4%, then let's move our scales less than that 4%. How much? Well, let's see how aggressive we could get. Could we do a full 2%, right? And move the scales 2% while we're giving average incumbency 4%? The reason for that distance is to help manage the compression that can occur.
That's correct. Now, let me ask you another question. We have the starting, the mid, and the, the upper. What policies are in place, Mr. Metzler, if you know, that dictates when a person reaches their mid-scale? Is it simply longevity? Or is it, you know, positive employee evaluations or a mixture of the both? Or how do we decide that?
It's when they, Matt?
Sure. It, it, it should be a combination of both ideally, because you, you want to be sure that their years of service are measured by their contributions, right? That it's a positive contribution that's being made, and that they're working towards that. On average, we typically find that that intersection should occur somewhere about seven years, trying to get to that pay target. And that's fairly conservative, right? We're talking public sector targets in at 7%, or seven years.
So that would mean from beginning to top pay would be a 14-year span.
To the pay target, to that middle, that middle number.
Right, I understand, but if we're going for seven years to the middle target, then I assume that we're looking at 14 years from the beginning to the top pay was what that classification would be good for.
Typically, the progression from that midpoint, that pay target out to maximum can be slower. It does not have to occur at that same pace. But if we're not getting incumbents closer to that pay target within a reasonable period of time, that's when we have the turnover. My, my guess is Ms. Kingston would probably tell us that most of the turnover that they experience is going to occur at less than seven years. Typically, it's not going to be someone at 15 years or above that's going to have a turnover. So the, the more you can progress folks quickly in that first employment phase that they're with you, the better off you're going to be.
Two more. So if you are raising these classifications across the board, whatever percentage for, you know, inflationary cost, then you, you avoid compression at that rate if you're, if you're doing merit pay based on evaluation, is that correct? So that would be a way to avoid the compression?
That's right. You're trying to space those out, and then you have a study that comes along periodically to say, you know, we did 2% and 4%. How close did we really hit market by our placing at 2% and 4%? 4% average progression and 2% for the structural adjustment.
Ms. Kingston, there, there are three components generally to a person's satisfaction, and that is salary, benefits, and flexibility. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so I believe, Mr. Metzler, in the last week, you and I and several of the commissioners have talked about work-at-home options for some of our employees. Is it, is that still, does that help alleviate some of the problems that we're having if we, if we allow those, those employees who are capable from working at home? Because we have the software to monitor that. Is that a viable option for some of our workers?
It is, and it's viable for a lot of our staff. I mean, we've sent the survey out again for the second go-round. We did it, of course, for COVID last time, but most recently, we're seeing that in the private sector that folks are doing that. And when we do exit interviews with our staff that's leaving, that's one of the kickers that they've really been focusing on, is that they're either one at small mom, and lots of them are doing a hybrid work environment at their new employer. And that's appealing to folks to be able to work from home some because of the unknown with schooling. And here, I mean, if, you know, schools get shut down, that's, they freak out. And I have had several people quit so that they could do homeschool. Well, if they're in a work environment that's hybrid or it's going to allow them to work from home, then they don't have to worry about leaving employment. They can still serve us, and we can serve them by allowing them to do that, if their job is the one that can do that and be successful at it.
And I believe that during the COVID, when we were working, a lot of our employees from home, I understand that we actually saw a rise in the, the productivity of their work. Is that correct? Is that true?
It is, because the, the interruptions are less. They still have to be available for phone calls throughout the day. Most of them, if they didn't have a county cell phone, they forwarded their office phone to their personal phone in order to receive those calls. But I think for the majority of it, our folks, especially our data entry folks, they were more successful at home because they didn't have those interruptions. And, and I mean, let's just be honest, when you're at work, I mean, you might be up and down the hall, you might be talking, somebody come in, and those are things that are distracting.
Thank you.
Mr. Travis.
Ms. Kingston, I'm sure you do exit interviews with the people that leave, and I, and I can just imagine, you know, the top one is probably salary. But, you know, even in the last budget session, it's been my argument for a while now that we don't have a benefit package that's suitable for our area. You know, we, we don't even offer 401K. When Eden and Reesaw and all these offer 401K, and it's been my argument, you've got to have an appealing benefit package to keep them here. I mean, other than state retirement, that's all they got, right?
That's about it.
So what other benefits does an employee have, other than state retirement?
We do still pay for the employee themselves. We do pay 100% of their insurance premiums. That's a biggie.
Single, self?
Yes, for employee only. Most of the counties that neighbor us do not do that anymore. They are, the employee is responsible for paying a portion of their own insurance. So that is one thing that we do still have that some of our neighboring counties do not, but that's not enough.
Right, and I know we've, we've tried to put on, on-site doctor here, PA, on-site dentist to try to help all that out, but I don't think that's enough. It's been my argument for a while that, you know, we have to offer 401K, maybe a little more time off for vacation. We're trying to do for salary. What other benefit? Is that, are they the top that we need to be looking at, or is there other benefits we need to be looking at?
Those are the top. I mean, unless you have heard anything different from employees, those are the ones that they talk about. I mean, people ask all the time about 401K. Now, we'll be honest, we do not have a huge enrollment in 401K or our 457, but I feel like that is because there is no match.
Right. So, so I guess, you know, just take the paramedics, for example, you know, and, and this board, I know we appreciate everything you do. It's, it's a tough time, and I appreciate them trying to hang with us because we're trying our best to fix it. Other than salary, what, what else do you recommend for us to do for those critical positions?
You want Rodney to speak about the paramedics, or do you want me to go ahead and?
I want to know what you think. You're the HR lady.
Well, I'm telling you what I think about the animal shelter. The animal shelter is one of our lowest paid, and I'm not trying to pick on them in any way or demean them in any way, but those folks at the animal shelter who are our kennel attendants and our animal shelter technicians, people in this county want that animal shelter to run, and if you talk about closing it down, you know the wrath that comes from the citizens in this county. Well, when you're paying an animal shelter technician to stand up there in boots and be in a kennel and clean up what they're cleaning up, or if they're not doing that, just say that they're one of the technicians that's helping euthanize a dog, and they're making $8.54 an hour, and they can go to McDonald's, literally at McDonald's, and make $1,250 an hour, they're not coming here. And when we call these people and ask them, you know, we're confirming their interviews, they're like, oh, no, Ms. Kingston, I took a job at Food Lion, I'm so sorry, I won't be able to come. If we get that, I mean, half the time, we don't even get them to show up. That's a biggie. I mean, we've got to move these salaries up, especially for these frontline workers like that. It's just like with the paramedics. I mean, the paramedics are making $8 more an hour to go to the hospital. I mean, I don't know that we can compete with that kind of salary because, you know, the hospital's paying a nurse $45 an hour. Well, they might be paying our paramedics $20 to $25 an hour. I don't know that we can compete with King. with, can compete with that hourly. But can we do something else to incentivize the work that they're doing right now and the shifts that they're taking on until we can get through this crisis and maybe get some more paramedics on our staff?
Right. My last question is for Mr. Reese. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but based on reading what you presented to us, you know, and I was arguing this back in June, during the budget, that we're going to have a major problem, especially with the benefit package. But we got it broke down to one-thirds, and I honestly don't think two years from now it's going to be good, because this thing is going to keep snowballing until we get in front of it. And I know this board probably don't want to hear that you need to do full implementation, but I'm asking you, the professional, how do you see it going for the next two, two, three years if we just do one-third?
Well, in great consulting style, I have two answers for you, right? I have on the one hand, and then on the other hand, right? So on the one hand, as I gave the answer to Mr. Richardson, I have no piece of data, I have no information that I can share with you here that I can reasonably say in a strategic way, take your foot off the gas. I mean, I don't have that for you. If I did, I would share it with you. That's who I am. The other side of that is, is whatever you do has to be sustainable, right? So you don't want to do something now and set a precedent for what you can't afford to do in year two or three, right? And so you've really got to take a look at that budget. I mean, that is the hard issues that you all have all the time, every time you get together, trying to juxtapose out demands that are there with the budget that you have. And so that's, that's the balance of that, is what's sustainable.
Yeah, because it's my belief, as this crazy economy and way it's going right now, more and more people are going to keep leaving if we don't adjust. And I feel like if we can do one-third now, and that's going to protect some people. But the other ones that's in that third year or second year, they're going to leave, because they're going to feel like we ain't addressing them quick enough. But the problem that this board has to face is, and nobody wants to hear the tax word, but after 12 years of no tax increases, eventually, this board is going to have to do something, either raise revenue, sales tax, or something, or you're going to have to raise taxes one way or the other. Because you, this county cannot keep competing with Guilford County, Forsyth County. So one way or another, the taxpayers of this county is going to hit, be hit hard eventually. Is that how you see it?
Yeah. That's probably a little bit above my pay grade, is probably the way I should say that, right? I do not envy the chairs that you're in to have to make those kinds of decisions.
I mean, it's very unprecedented for a county to go this long without some type of tax increase. Very impressive. Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Berger?
Yes, sir. Just, I saw some things as far as averages and minimum and that sort of thing. Also saw a list of different counties, and in some cases, cities.
Right.
Are those the counties or cities that you use to compute those numbers, or?
Yes. The ones that you see there on the, on the graphs, those are going to be on the tables that have that, those are going to be the ones that we use. So not every city, not every county is going to be included in every class. Cities typically don't employ income maintenance workers. They're not going to employ paramedics. So there is going to be some variability in that, depending upon the class, but this was the group that we sought to. Sheriff's deputies being an exception to that, because you've got police officers and sheriff's deputies that would be in that same market. So where there's market data, that where there's a benchmark comparison in both a municipal and a county employer, then we would use that.
And what kind of geographic area did you use to make those comparisons?
Primarily, it's the Piedmont Triad.
Okay. So a lot of our comparisons are to the bigger counties?
Absolutely. Absolutely, yeah. It's what we would call a labor shed analysis, right? That we did not necessarily say, okay, what are the other counties in North Carolina that have a same revenue profile that you would have, have a same population profile, and do that? That was not our analysis. Our analysis was to look at where is the labor shed that you're going to pull from, where are they going to go to? And that's the Piedmont Triad that's there.
And we kind of talked about internally about, well, let's compare ourselves to like-sized counties like Burke County, Caldwell County, Harnett County. But those are the ones we're not competing with. I mean, they're not driving from here to Burke County, here to Harnett County. They're driving here to Guilford and these other, unfortunately.
And we tried to look at that, too, in terms of where the placement is, right? So it's, we're still looking at apples-to-apples comparisons. I will pick on your county manager. We would not compare your county manager to the county manager of Guilford County, because that's a much larger entity, and it's a different kind of structure that's there. So we do look at those apples-to-apples comparisons of, is this job similar enough, right? And for a lot of your benchmark positions, right, the profile of what is Guilford County recruiting for, for a sheriff's deputy, is exactly the same profile that you would have.
Okay. Mr. Manager, one more time, reiterate. If we approve this pay plan as presented, what will the additional annual cost be to the county?
So for one full year, it'd be $474,000, but for this year, it's $365,000, because we're starting in October. So we're a few months behind. But it'd be a total of roughly $475,000, $474,000. You have $300,000, you budgeted last year, $400,000 this year, and we're going to recommend continuing that. Obviously, our hopes will be that the cost will go down, because these are our most vulnerable positions. I think they're 240, 41% of our work staff that we evaluated this time. So hopefully, we'll go down rather than up.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Gentlemen, we've all talked. Any further questions?
Commissioner?
Is there something else that you want us to?
That'll be next.
Okay.
All right. So we've had the presentation. We've got the recommendation from our manager. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the one-third for this year.
Do we have a second?
I'm going to second that motion, but I'd like a caveat, because we're looking at the monetary, the remuneration piece. It's obvious that there's another piece that has to do with benefits and situations and other perks, if you would, that I'm willing to second this, but I, and I'm willing to verbally turn it over to your office, if you would, to consider a package of perks. Does that make sense?
Sure. So these things that we can look at through, throughout the year, I would recommend that we, that if you all do approve the one-third study, that we look at this for the next budget year, because it will take money to go towards this. And so we, between now and then, we could work on something for you all to consider, or options to consider.
That's a good, good answer there.
Second?
Mr. Chairman, I will amend my motion to reflect his second.
Very good. All right. Any more questions, Commissioner Berger?
One other question. So, Mr. Reese, in making those comparisons, did you also consider benefit packages?
No. The analysis is on direct comp. And the reason for that is that, for the most part, we are looking at public sector entities. And those have a very comparable, since it's the same retirement system that they're in, the variabilities that you're seeing are the things, such as your 401K and the contributions that you make towards health insurance. Health insurance would be wonderful if it was one of those things that you could put on a scale and do comparability on. But your, the group that you have, right, the folks that you're insuring, those are the ones that are going to set your rates, right? And then that becomes the same issue that we talked about with budget to what the costs are to insure those souls.
What I'm hearing you say is, our benefit package is similar to those entities listed at this point in time?
That's right. That's right. It's similar enough that there is not something that is so detrimental to that, as far as we know, that we would bring it to your attention, right? You don't have a component. What you're missing on that, to the discussion, is that what folks have found is when they incentivize things like 401K and those post-retirement kind of benefits, that that has two effects. One, it is certainly something that people are looking at and they're aware of. But then, two, it has a cost savings to the county, because the more dollars that are put into those post-retirement plans, that's tax, that's payroll taxes that you're not having to pay for, right? So if I can, if I can encourage people to put in that share, then it's, it's not necessarily a dollar-for-dollar cost to me, because when I pay that dollar, I'm not having to pay payroll tax on top of it. So that's one of the strategies that probably is one that you might want to look at, that it may not be as expensive to actually implement something like that as it would be if you were doing a direct comp.
Commissioner Powell?
Mr. Metzler, is in this plan, if we approve this, and I certainly will vote for the employees, is there something in there that protects this, as I talked about with this gentleman earlier, so that we don't continue to go backwards, you know?
Kind of like what we discussed earlier today. I think that's something that we may propose in the future, going forward.
So let me ask you this. Is, would it be possible, could your office prepare that and have it ready in 180 days, which would be six months? Do we think we could do that within that timeframe?
Well, I think the best route to do is have it in the budget process, which will fall within that timeframe that you're talking about. So we can certainly have something available.
Okay. Thank you.
But let's be realistic. That's something that's in the budget process every year. There's nothing that this board can do to tie the hands of a future board.
Right, that's right. I understand that.
On an annual basis. So that is a budget decision every year. So the answer to that question is no. You can put something in place, but there's nothing to prevent it from being changed.
There's nothing to prevent this from being changed?
Sure.
That's right.
So if...
We'll have to do it year by year, as far as the budget process.
Yeah. The point of what I'm saying is, it's an annual thing. It's not something that we can do now, or six months from now, or eight months from now, that will be set in stone.
I understand that. I would prefer to see something out there that tells me, though, that we're not going to end up in four years with a, well, I'm just talking about, we just did this in 2016.
Oh, God, yeah. We've done it for 10 years.
And now we're back here doing it again to the tune of $474,000. And I just want to make sure that in three years, we're not back here doing this again, because we've fallen so far behind.
Let me answer that. Let me answer that, if you would. Generally, around the end of January, we have a retreat or a meeting in here, and we talk about priorities and concerns for the upcoming budget. And that is typically one of the items we bring up. Is that not right?
That's correct. And again, to go back to what Commissioner Powell said, we can make it a process, but as Commissioner Berger says, any governing body can change that. But we can put it in as a process to go towards.
Very good.
Yeah. My point is, along with what our chairman is talking about, we do this, we haven't, we haven't dropped the ball on this. This is something that we do every year when we go through the budget process and those things leading up to the budget. It's just that the extraordinary circumstances of what's happening to the job market in this particular economy is requiring remedial action, is what I'll call it. But I'm pretty comfortable with the budget process to include those lead-up meetings being sufficient to make the ongoing aspect normal, if you would. My second remains.
Very good. Gentlemen, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed. Very good. The motion carries. Mr. Metzler?
Yes, Mr. Gates.
Matt, thank you.
Hey, Matt. Ms. Kingston? Ms. Kingston, you keep it up. You're doing a great job.
So to, can't be on right off of it.
We've heard about the words incentivize.
And the job market, and why we...
That he did.
And Rodney, they did get a copy of that memorandum that you gave me.
Okay. And this really takes off right from that. Over the last six months, EMS has lost many members to other sources of employment, who, in the opinion of the exiting members, have stated is for better compensation, better hours, more benefits. The three things that we just talked about, we just mentioned, the targets for the employee satisfaction, salary, benefits, flexibility. One member came to me when I asked him, and I said, why are you leaving? What can we do to keep you? He said to me, Mr. Gates, I don't want to leave. He said, but it doesn't matter if it's a construction job, I've got to provide better for my family. Thus, we go back to salary, benefits, flexibility. This is very troubling for the county. And the reason it's troubling for the county is because we have a legal obligation to provide EMS coverage 24/7, 365, to the citizens of this county. The North Carolina Administrative Code states that each county government shall establish an EMS system. An EMS system is defined by a service area for every EMS system, which for us is our entire county. That's 573 square miles. There are some other criteria, but perhaps the most important one is the highest level of care offered within any EMS provider service shall be available to the citizens within that service area 24 hours a day and seven days a week. I looked at data from 2020 and from 2021, March 1st of 2020 through September of 2020, and I compared that to this year. The times we go down to no EMS units is up 14.81%. The times we have one EMS unit in the county is up 11.21%. So why are we losing EMS members? We've already talked about that, and it's been illustrated, but I want to illustrate it again. UNC Rockingham is filling ER nursing, their ER nursing positions with paramedics. More pay, as Stephanie talked about, $5 to $8 more per hour. They're working 36 scheduled hours per weeks, and they have tuition assistance to complete a nursing degree. We've lost six paramedics in the last few months to UNC Rockingham. Caswell County, we lost one member to them. Better pay, better hours. Again, the better hours and the determination of that member, but the better pay is what it is. It's more money. We lost one member to a transfer to integrated health. Overall, the EMS division with members on FMLA, intermittent FMLA, of which you well know that member can go out at any time, that intermittent FMLA gives them the ticket to call out based on what their condition that put them on intermittent FMLA is. Injury leave, and the eight members that I just mentioned, we have lost one-third of our EMS workforce. We have 62 members, field positions in EMS. We have 54 paramedics and eight EMTs. At any one time, based on the outages that we have, based on intermittent FMLA, FMLA itself, injury leave, the vacancies that we already have, that's 22 potential openings in EMS right now. As was already stated, and Stephanie stated, administrative staff have been notified that they would be assisting in vacant positions, and we have assisted. Every administrative person, every field supervisor has gone on the truck. Those that are typically not on trucks are going on trucks to assist during these times. We don't mind doing that. That's our job. That's what we should do. But we have to keep in mind, we've got an administrative role, too, that we must occupy. In the EMS division, we are currently reducing and/or shutting down less busy trucks in an effort to staff the busier bases, and we're relying heavily on rescue squads to assist with basic life support, response, and transport. Those who are working overtime, on-call, taking on extra shifts, they're becoming very tired, they're fatigued, they're burned out. With COVID going on, which has been going on, as you well know, for a long time, they go home to families, wondering, what am I going to expose my family to tonight? Granted, they signed up to be in these situations, and part of the job is that you're exposed to infectious disease. But nobody signed up for COVID and the problems that COVID brought about and continues to bring about. EMS serves a life safety mission, and we must take immediate action to attempt to retain our current workforce and reward those who are going well above and beyond all expectations to cover vacant shifts and keep the operation afloat. There are many other divisions of county government that play important roles. EMS is one of the only immediate lifesaving response agencies within the county. So what do we recommend? We talked to Alamance County. Both Rodney Stewart and I called. We didn't realize we were calling. We were almost called simultaneously to talk to them about their program and what they had. And this, this, what we are proposing actually comes from Alamance, and Alamance County is doing it. Alamance County is filling their trucks right now. For the most part, it's been very beneficial to them. We propose a $100 premium pay. Premium pay is what ARPA Fund language is, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. A $100 premium pay or shift bonus per shift that full-time... A $100 premium pay or shift bonus per shift that full-time members pick up at times when it's necessary for the basic operation of the EMS service. When we're getting ready to have to shut a truck down, and we don't have people to go on a truck, we pay those people a $100 bonus per shift for picking those shifts up in an effort to ensure that these members receive $100. We don't want $100 that taxes are then taken out of. Taxes will take 41% of that. That means that member will get about 60 bucks if we do it, just based on $100. We must factor in 7.65% FICA, 11.4% retirement, 22% tax, because it's taxed at a higher rate because it's a bonus. With these percentages, the actual budgeted amount needs to be $141 per shift. That ensures that they get the majority or all of the $100. These figures are estimated based on the current year data. Once members are incentivized, and we've heard that word throughout tonight, once these members are incentivized, incentivized to volunteer for these extra shifts, these figures could increase, as we've not been able to fill all of our vacant positions on the EMS trucks. Current projections indicate that a shift bonus program would have a monthly cost of approximately $4,855.92. At this rate, we would need to budget $58,271.09 to sustain a shift bonus program for a 12-month period.
Certain amount, $58,000, how much?
The cost of one entry-level paramedic, inclusive of salary and benefits, is $58,243. One entry-level paramedic does not help our current staffing problem, but an incentive program which focuses on our entire staff and incentivizes them, improves morale, and shift coverage, does benefit our entire service. We propose that the premium pay program, we propose it for a six-month period. At the end of that six-month period, we reevaluate. We see what our staffing looks like. Does the one-third pay study that you just passed, does that serve as a recruitment tool? Does that higher base pay create recruitment that brings people onboard? If not, and we're still in a staffing problem, then we perhaps continue this program, and we bring the program back for you. ARPA funds pay for this. There's some criteria, and Pat and I went over the criteria, but ARPA funds pay for it, and they, we meet all the criteria for that. And there's three critical criteria, but one is that you can't pay them by more than $13 per hour based on the bonus. A $100 bonus is $8.33 an hour based on 12 hours, or if you want to include the salary of the FICA, the taxes, and look at it from $141, that on 12 hours is $11.75 an hour. Each eligible worker cannot receive more than $25,000 in aggregate over the life of the ARPA grant. We don't have people that are going to fall into that category. And the overall incentive for them cannot be more than 150% of what they currently make in relation to the North Carolina average wage of occupation, which 150% over that would be around $28 an hour. Again, we're not in jeopardy of reaching that. So I think we have to take immediate action, and I've talked to Lance about it. Me and Paul and Lance and Rodney Stewart and Stephanie met. We've talked about mashing the gas. The gentleman just talked about, he can't, he can't say that we can't continue to mash the gas. Right now, we've got to mash the gas, because we're losing people. And we're losing them because of the three things that we talked about, salary, benefits, and flexibility. We need to incentivize our people. We need to reward them for what they're doing. We need to do everything we can to keep them onboard. We need to mash the gas, and we need to pay them a bonus.
Let me ask you for clarity. You said that it's about $4,900 a month, or basically six months would be $29,136, and you're asking for six months. Now, does this include the FICA match and other burden amounts that would need to be added, or is this the total budget amount needs to be made?
Now, what, what, just to round it off, what we recommend is $30,000 for the first six months, and then come back to you all with a plan of action if we haven't filled all those positions.
But the $30,000 would cover the match, FICA, insurance, all those kind of burdens?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Commissioner Travis, do you have a question?
Yeah. Rodney, I really appreciate what you and your staff do, and I hope next budget cycle, we try to figure out a way to get you a 911 manager, because I know you're probably very overworked right now, working all that you do. So I hope the manager listens to that, and I appreciate what you and your staff are doing. Let me ask you this. You're proposing a 141 for the extra shifts. Is that enough? I mean, to me, I feel like around number 200 would be better, after tax, be about 150. I mean, because the whole goal here is to make sure the people we have stay here, but I guess the next question would be, what are you going to do to recruit those that you need to fill those positions? Are you asking for, I mean, are you eventually going to ask for a bonus, for a sign-on bonus? Or, I mean, just, you think salary would do it alone?
There are a lot of places that do sign-on bonuses. I think sign-on bonuses are great. Durham County 911 just put a thing out the other day, an ad, they're paying a $5,000 incremental sign-on bonus to 911 telecommunications. I think that's outstanding. I think in the public safety world, if you look at telecommunications, 911, the law enforcement side of it, I think that's outstanding, and I think that's needed. Could we do more than the 141? Certainly, if this board deems that necessarily. The 141 is where we come in at a base level. If this board deems necessary that we can get more than that, then certainly we're all for that 100%. Another question, what are we doing to recruit people? We do go out to other community colleges, and we recruit. We have a team that goes out and talks to these people. We take our newest EMS unit. It's flashy, it's pretty, it looks nice. That is attractive to the new person in the workforce. They want to drive that pretty truck. It's four-wheel drive, it's got the American flag on one side and the North Carolina flag on the other. They think that's great. But to the seasoned employee, they don't care what they drive. They want to look at, what are we doing five, 10, what does this job do for me five, 10, 15 years down the road?
Right.
And that's where we lose the battle, because of the benefits package, the matching 401K. That's where we lose the battle in the recruitment process.
The problem I'm having, Mr. Cates, is you're down 22, 23 employees for your paramedic. So that means you have people working double shifts, and, and they've been doing it for a while now. And I'm worried about that burnout, that burnout. That's the whole reason why we went from 24-hour shifts to 12-hour shifts, because our employees were getting burnt out. And when you're on, in that truck, trying to save somebody's life, you can't be tired. And you've got people double shifting. We're going to have a major problem if we don't try to incentivize them enough to really want to pay attention to what they're doing. And I don't know if $100 extra in a paycheck is enough for a shift work.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, if you would all consider our recommendation for now, you did the one-third study, which will help us with recruitment. If you do the 141, if we still find out we have problems, we'll come back to you at a later period, but I think that for now, with the numbers that we have available, that would be very fruitful for us and for the staff.
And you're recommending this for a six-month period. Commissioner Berger?
Well, and this is your recommendation that's before us?
Yes.
Okay.
Based on a collaborative effort.
Sure. But I mean, this is your recommendation, and I just wanted to make sure. I think some folks were confused. Motion to approve.
I wasn't, I wasn't done, but you go ahead and make your motion.
We'll discuss, we'll discuss it. We have a motion.
Just jump right in whenever you feel like it.
Commissioner Richardson, was that a second?
That was a second.
All right. Go ahead to Mr. Travis, if you've got a question.
Take the vote. Y'all want to jump in and run the show, go ahead.
We're asking if there are any questions. If you don't, very good. There is a motion and a second, and...
I don't interrupt y'all, but that's okay.
And we've had an opportunity for comment, and additional comments. So with that being said, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Cates. Thank you, Mr. Manager. We appreciate that.
I'll make sure I return the favor later on.
Commissioner, you had an opportunity. I gave you the opportunity again to comment.
Not talking to you, Mr. Chairman, talking to Mr. Berger down here.
And I gave you the opportunity.
Don't worry about it.
All right. Very good. With that, Mr. Manager, is there any new business? Very good. Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Comments next, and Commissioner Travis.
I'm going to wait until the last to make my comments, so y'all go ahead. I'm going to give my time to think what I want to say.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah. Recently, we've, we've had occasion to recognize quite a few citizens of Rockingham County for contributing to youth projects. I think a lot of good things are going on in the county, and a lot of volunteerism, and a lot of good citizens. Well, my criteria for a good citizen is they are aware of their neighbor. They don't litter. They help solve waste problems rather than create them. They encourage youth. They assist the elderly. They volunteer where appropriate. They get vaccinated. They support our schools. And so, Mr. Chair, all I have tonight is to encourage our good citizens to keep doing the good things that they do, and encourage those folks that would like to fall into that category to join them. So thank you much, good citizens of Rockingham County.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Powell?
So I would like to thank all of you that come out tonight, and this is certainly a very difficult situation and the time that we live in with the wage and the employees we deal with. I've been dealing with it for the last seven months in my own business, so I'm very much aware of what this economy has brought to bear on us. But I'm very proud of the people that were here tonight, because they're still doing the job. And I know that because last Saturday night, I was listening to the scanner, and Mr. Cates was riding a truck about 10 o'clock that night. I have been listening for the last two or three weeks to see how many times we had no ALS unit in the county, and it's been more times than not. And thank goodness that we've had our friends and neighbors from Stokes County, Guilford County, Casual County, and all three rescue squads that have helped answer these calls. It's easy to sit back and look at the dollars, because that's very important, but we have to realize that there are real lives at stake when we start talking about EMS and our fire departments and our rescue squads. So it's a simple matter of just trying to decide how long you want your loved one to lay in the floor with a heart attack while we're waiting on an ALS unit. So, Mr. Cates, I support you. I support the organization, the county, the fire departments, and I'm glad that we were able to accomplish something here tonight, and I hope that it's enough, and you were able to hire and fill your vacancies. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Commissioner Berger?
Well, tonight, we, we did have some distinguished guests. Certainly, former Commissioner Reese Pardell, who's now a member of the State House, and also Representative Pat Hurley was here, and former Representative Carter's wife. We certainly appreciate her being able to attend. I know it's a difficult time for Brenda and the family, but we certainly offer our thoughts and prayers for them. Also, from the school board was Paula Rakestraw. Of course, you saw the sheriff, Sam Page. And we certainly want to extend a welcome to Ms. Rebecca Pigram. You've had your work cut out for you tonight. Number of pictures, some very wide angles, so we appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Berger. And much as everyone has said, we appreciate everyone who attended tonight. It was a long meeting, and a lot's happening. With that, again, I appreciate it. Commissioner Travis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank Ms. Kingston for taking over the HR position, and Marzy, thank you for coming on board. I know you're going to do great. I've been hearing some great things about you, so I look forward to working with you. And our new PIO, Ms. Pigram, we've worked together a little bit, so that's going to be a fun time with you, too. So I expect great things out of you with our social media and everything, so I appreciate. One of the recognized, Diane Parnell's here for the Republican Party Chairwoman. I appreciate you being here, and everybody else here. But I really want to let the paramedics and EMTs and EMS know, and Rodney Cates know, you have my support 100%. I've been fighting hard for you ever since I've been on this board, and I think most of your employees know it. I would really love to see a 911 manager, because I know Rodney, you are being stretched thin, but I just want to say I appreciate everybody, our first responders, Sheriff's Department, everybody that go out every day to protect our citizens, because if it wasn't for you doing your lifesaving missions, then we would be in a world of hurt. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Travis. With that, we'll be going into closed session here in just a few minutes, but I'd like to point out that our next meeting is October 4th at Stonewall Town Hall. That's a Monday night at 6:30 at Stonewall Town Hall. So we appreciate you guys attending at that location. With that, the chair will accept a motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318 dot 11A1 to approve closed session minutes, and dot 11A5 to instruct negotiating